Why don't we get started with Senator Benning? I'm going to introduce the committee first. Senator Joe Benning, as is Anthony Ticklebox. He's from Caldonia County. Senator Philip Ruth is from Chittenden County. Senator Allison Linder from Winter County. Senator Jeanette White from Wyndham County. And Senator Tim Ash, former member of the committee and the president pro time in the Senate, is from Chittenden County. And your own Mark McDonald, state senator from Orange County, is here in the audience. And I think there may be a couple of House members here. If they are, you're free to identify yourselves. I don't see them. All right. We're going to pick the first three names. I'm Dick Sears from Bennington County. Sorry, I forgot who I was. That happens. If you come up to speak, don't move the mic, because there's all kinds of media mics there. So Senator Benning has picked three numbers. He's going to call the numbers, and those will be the first three speakers. And then we'll just continue picking right through. We thought this was the fairest way. We've had criticism in the past, because people show up, sign up to speak, and then they never get seen, because the first forty or fifty get to speak, and people who drove four or five hours don't get to. One other complaint or good thing is that we're here in Randolph rather than Montpelier. The reason we chose Randolph is because it's on the interstate, and it's easier for people from the southern part of the state or northern part of the state to get to. Frequently, we hold periods in Montpelier. I represent Bennington. People from Bennington don't get to Montpelier, and if they do, they can never sign up, because they're too late. So we just thought this was a little fair. And we'll see how it goes. And we really want to thank the folks at Vermont Technical College for hosting this.
Mention me on deck. Come with me. Oh, that's your job.
Good afternoon, everybody. First off, we're going to do this three at a time. So as I call the numbers, I'm going to read the last three numbers on your ticket, because I'm told that the first three are all identical for everybody's tickets here tonight. The first number to be called, I'm going to ask you to come up here and have a seat in this chair right here. The next two numbers after that will be right in the front row here, next to Mike Ferret. If you have any questions about how that's working, Michael will certainly let you know how it's going to be done. But I think we'll take the next person who's closest to the microphones, and then call the next one after that, is the person who's on deck. So the first person up to speak tonight is ticket number 111.
This is the first time every morning.
I can put you back in the bin if you'd like.
No, I better get the chance.
Okay. Yep. The next ticket number is 100. No, you can come on up and have a seat. 111, you can have a seat right here.
I'm just going to wait till you had...
That's okay. 100, you're going to have a seat up here next to Michael. And ticket number 055 will be right on deck. And we will remind you that when you are speaking, if you could first identify yourself and tell us at least the town of where you're from.
Okay, just let me know when you're ready.
We are ready.
My name is Edward Gilbert, Jr. I'm from Berrytown, just outside of Montpelier, about nine miles. I also was a candidate that ran in the 2018 midterm election cycle versus Bernie Sanders. But I just wanted to say, oh, sorry. Thank you. There are several bills, of course, that, being a veteran, Pro II-A, a life NRA member, I feel a few of these are very intrusive. I, as a father of two sons and one daughter, am very concerned about their future, the ability for them to enjoy the great outdoors of hunting, fishing, target shooting. And I feel Vermont is one of the few open carry states that has one of the best track records when it comes to firearm safety, teaching our children at a very young age how to handle weapons appropriately, how to lock them up, how to keep the ammunition locked away in secure areas. And I just feel that I'd like to keep that tradition going in Vermont. As a dad that cares for his sons very much and one daughter, you don't want anything to happen. And of course, I'd rather empower them on how to handle it versus falling in a bad situation where they don't have the ability to protect themselves.
Thirty seconds.
Being a dad that has traveled a lot, so I love this little state. I love our traditions. I would like them to have the same opportunities that I had as a kid, growing up. And that's about where I stand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ticket 086, if you'd come on up.
Hi. Hi. Hey. Good evening. My name is Lori Emerson. I'm the executive director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Vermont. And NAMI Vermont is the independent Vermont chapter of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, a statewide, nonprofit grassroots volunteer organization comprised of family members, friends, and individuals affected by mental illness. Our mission is to provide education, support, and advocacy to individuals and family members living with mental illness. And NAMI Vermont would like to comment on Bill S-22 that your committee's reviewing as it relates to a waiting period for the purchase of firearms. In Vermont, approximately one in five people live with a mental health condition. One in 25 live with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia, major depression, or bipolar disorder. And on average, one person dies by suicide every three days in the state. Vermont had 118 suicides in 2017. More than 10 times as many people die by suicide than homicide. Suicide is a community health issue, and the good news is that suicide can often be prevented. And that's why we are calling on you as Vermont lawmakers to pass common sense legislation that will address suicide prevention by creating a waiting period for the purchase of firearms and reducing access to lethal means through safe storage methods. It is important to note that 90 percent of people who survive a suicide attempt do not go on to die by suicide. However, unlike almost every other method of suicide, use of a firearm in a suicide attempt is almost always lethal and leaves little opportunity for intervention. According to the Center for Disease Report, researchers found that more than one-half of people who died by suicide did not have a known diagnosed mental health condition at the time of death, and suicide is rarely caused by any single factor. Other factors that can contribute to the risk of suicide include relationship issues or loss, substance misuse, physical health issues, and problems as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to send your testimony in?
Yes, I did email it already to the committee.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up in the front seats, 056.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
Hi, Dick.
How are you?
Hi, my name is Rodney Share, and I'm from Ducksbury. I'm hearing against some of these bills. I mean, I had a nephew that committed suicide with a gun. I had a cousin that committed suicide with pills. And if somebody wants to commit suicide, they're going to do it. And I don't think it's right to punish everybody for some people's mistakes. That's not right. I have guns in my house. I like guns. I have a grandson who I bought guns for. And you guys are going to punish him like we went and bought a gun for him. We're riding around, we found the gun we liked, we bought it, we brought it home for him. They're locked up, they're safe, they're not out in the open. But to take and put this through to make a 48-hour waiting period and punish us for people's other people's actions is wrong. To me, it just doesn't make any sense. If people are going to commit suicide, I mean, I feel bad for the people that testified the other day in Montpelier for their son. But these people should have, in my opinion, they should have been more attentive to their son's needs and seen some of this stuff and just... But it just doesn't make any sense to punish everybody. So I'm against these bills wholeheartedly. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ticket number 112, you are on deck.
Hi.
112.
I'm 86. Well, I feel 86 today, but that's number 86.
Me too.
Some days.
112 should be in the front row in the audience here, next to Michael Ferret.
Go ahead.
Come on up and have a seat up here.
I'm Paul Gross from Jericho. I'd like to speak against waiting periods. I think that's a pretty poor strategy for suicide prevention. I would argue that most of the people who commit suicide with a firearm have had the firearm for longer than the waiting period is ever going to slow things down. Firearms, especially, you're dealing with veterans who have a two-to-one ratio of firearms of suicide. Most, a lot of veterans that I know have firearms and have had them for years. So to put a waiting period in place to prevent somebody from committing suicide is pretty irrational. That's about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ticket 047, you're on deck.
Betty Edson from Randolph Center. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. As a person of faith and a concerned citizen, I do support H-159, S-22, S-26, and S-72. I would like to share with you this anecdote. At a workshop about gun violence that I helped to plan, I chatted afterwards with someone who attended who did not share my views. He expressed concern that the legislation I support would provide a slippery slope to removing guns from all citizens. And I said that neither I nor anyone I know has an agenda to take away people's rights to guns. What I said, can anybody like myself do to help bridge this huge gap of understanding? His response was that it would help a lot for me to say out loud what I just said, that in his experience, when he states his fear, people on the other side respond to him, and taking away people's guns would be bad. So that is mainly what I want to say tonight. I do not want to remove the right of any American citizen who wants a gun to have a gun. But I strongly support legislation that decreases the possibility that a depressed person or mentally unstable person will impulsively take his or her life or someone else's when a waiting period could make a difference. And I support legislation that would help prevent accidents by children who end up with guns in their hands. Surely, in Vermont, we can veer from the present national reality of distancing ourselves from those with whom we disagree, and instead find the common ground we need to keep our citizens safe and simultaneously protect the right of hunters and those who feel a gun is an important protection for themselves and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Ticket 059, you're on deck.
Sir? Yep.
You're next. Come on up. Come on up. The last ticket I called is going over to those seats.
Hi, my name is Arthur Bento. I'm from Burlington. Would that help? Okay. My name is Arthur Bento. I'm from Burlington, Vermont. I really didn't intend to speak here today. However, as I listen to this, I realize that I do not honestly believe that there's anything that you can do to prevent someone who's hell-bent on committing suicide from committing suicide to start with. My wife committed suicide with a handgun. The only thing I can tell you about that is whether you understand this or anybody behind me understands it or not, she was going to kill herself. She killed herself in the quickest, most humane way possible. I know of at least seven other women in Vermont who have drank Drano. Most of them are going through their eighth, ninth, or 10th operation. They have no teeth, their internal organs are shot. Firearms to a lot of people seem like they're horrible instruments of destruction. Believe me, there are instruments of destruction that make firearms look insignificant. Who should not have a firearm? I have no idea. I don't, I believe that everybody should have a firearm. I don't have a problem with that. I grew up with firearms. I grew up with firearms in a town that understood it, that no longer seems to understand it, that no longer listens to me. I live in a town where I know that I am taxed with no representation whatsoever. And more and more, I'm seeing a state where I'm taxed with no representation whatsoever. To me, firearms are a civil rights issue. Every firearms law that has ever been introduced was introduced to make a significant other. As a firearms owner, I'm treated as a second-class citizen. I'm not a second-class citizen. Thank you for the opportunity this week.
Thank you for speaking.
Ticket number 103, you're on deck.
My name's Bruce McLean. I am from Peacham. I am a gun owner. I support hunting. I believe in the hunting culture. But what I don't believe in, all right, is standing by and doing nothing about the suicide rate in this country and in particular in this state. So I support S-22. I believe that most suicides are an impulsive act, and that a 48-hour waiting period, all right, will prevent some people from taking that impulsive act. And I also believe that a 48-hour waiting period will not impact on my ability to go out into the woods and hunt, nor anyone else in this state who is a law-abiding citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Ticket number 129, you're on deck.
Sir?
I am Stephen Reyes of Callis, Vermont. I am an attorney and an ordained deacon in the Episcopal Church. In the 1980s, I served three terms in the House and was elected to the Senate in '88. I was the lead sponsor of the attached S-98, which proposed a 10-day waiting period for the purchase of a handgun. The bill was referred to the Judiciary Committee. Although S-98 had eight bipartisan co-sponsors and was endorsed by the Vermont Chiefs of Police Association, the committee did not even hold an introductory hearing. I commend your committee for taking up S-22. I've read the news reports and listened to a video excerpt of the testimony of Alyssa and Rob Black, the parents of 23-year-old Andrew Black, before your committee. I've seen the photo of Andrew at work on December 3, 2018, looking relaxed and content, a guy I would enjoy talking with, hiking with, having a beer with. Three days later, he bought a gun at 11:30 and was dead at 4 o'clock. I can't help but wonder if S-98 had become law, whether Andrew would be alive. His parents testified to you that they believe Andrew would be alive if a waiting period had been in effect, based on their son's behavior and his electronic messages. I can't help but wonder if Professor Cheryl Hannah would be alive if a waiting period had been in effect. When I was getting information for S-98, there was an instance where someone had walked into a gun shop in Brattleboro, bought a gun, walked outside, committed suicide on the sidewalk. From my experience, I think many people's experience, the world can look very different a few days later. A seemingly unrelated conversation with a coworker, small acts of kindness with a stranger, interactions, unpredictable things can make a huge difference. Enactment of a waiting period is good public policy that would save lives. It could also make a heartfelt difference for those left behind.
Ticket number 113, you're on deck.
Hello, my name is Mike Stoddard. I live in Brookfield, Vermont. Sadly to say, I'm not a native Vermonter, but I am a retired police officer from Massachusetts. I've seen many, many situations for suicide, and I believe that if someone has the mind to do it, they're probably going to try to do it. A two-day waiting period, it may stop one or two, but I don't think it's going to stop a total number of them. As far as keeping guns locked up in your house, I know it's a real hard situation if it came to a point where someone tried to break into your house or attack you. It's a mind-blowing thing to try to handle that alone with a gun. But having to go and try to get one out and find bullets and load it and all at the same time is next to impossible. So as far as protection goes, it's far better off to be proactive as far as that goes. I think that's, I've said enough.
Thirty-five seconds.
I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Ticket 051, you're on deck.
I would urge you to...
Your name?
Oh, Bob Atkinson. Bob Atkinson from Wells, Vermont. I would urge you to oppose S-22 because it will not achieve its stated goal, to put a barrier up to deter suicides. A good doctor that testified at the last hearing uses examples, children that were unsuccessful. No one interviewed those who were successful, for obvious reasons, to ascertain the strength of their feelings or their plans. Someone I know seriously considered suicide 30 years ago, they said, and I quote, "Suicide is a long-term thought and not a spur-of-the-moment decision. The plan is carefully thought out and will be changed if a problem like a waiting period is imposed, or they will choose another method. The path to the decision is a combination of many, perhaps small occurrences, that build into a feeling of worthlessness or hopelessness. The feeling of uselessness, or not fitting in, whether real or perceived, is a powerful feeling which is debilitating. To believe people you know would be better off without you is a powerful incentive to commit suicide." The root problem is mental illness. Few people want to talk about this, including those with the problem, which is why they hide it so well. Our society has developed many contributing factors, some of which are the disintegration of the family, both parents have to work, and then assigning the teaching of values to babysitters and teachers at our state-run schools. The absence of respect, consideration, and courtesy toward others that formerly were taught at home, and the lack of consequences for misbehaving have produced several generations lacking these important values. These values were the grease that reduced friction between members of our society. Nowhere is this exhibited more clearly than in social media. In 2017, 5,237 patient days were spent in our state's emergency rooms for Vermonters with mental problems because there were no meds available in mental health facilities. We have public announcements on TV to stop smoking or study math and science. None for suicide prevention? We have worked to remove the stigma attached to various communities. Why not mental disorders? These people did not choose to have these problems. If we do not provide the help these people need, they will cure the problem themselves permanently." Thank you.
Ticket number 050, you're on deck.
Hello, my name's Scott Chapman. I reside in Moncton, Vermont. What we have before us is a pure civil rights discussion, whether or not our right on the Second Amendment in Article 16 of Vermont Constitution is a right equal to our other individual rights. Everybody, a lot of people in the world say that our rights are not to be limited in any way, except reasonable measures upon your right to keep and bear arms. The restrictions on the rights of arms has been used throughout this country since the 1690s to keep a portion of the population subservient to the major population, a portion of the population. It was used prior to the Civil War and the passing of the Fourteenth Amendment to keep people of color enslaved. After the Civil War, it was used in the Jim Crow era to keep people of color subservient to white people. This is horrible, horrible. And it continues. Everything in the Jim Crow era of the United States was done on a health and welfare basis. Segregated restrooms, segregated washrooms, segregated restaurants, lunch counters, et cetera. And yet again, we are being told that we need to limit your rights for the health and welfare of others. This is nothing but discrimination for anybody that wants to exercise their Second Amendment rights. It is segregation for the Second Amendment, and it is wrong. Can you imagine if we asked for a 48-hour waiting period for your Fifth Amendment rights? How about the media here? How about they have a 48-hour waiting period to produce the 6 o'clock news and have to ask government permission to exercise their First Amendment rights? This is purely a civil rights case and nothing but, this is not about firearms.
Can we hold down on the applause, please? Out of respect to everybody here?
No.
You can't?
We should be allowed...
You don't respect everybody here? Please? In order to try to give everybody here that would like to speak the time to speak, it's very harmful if we hold off on the applause. I know people are tempted to do otherwise, but we'd like to get everybody time to speak that would like to speak. Ticket number 118, you are now on deck.
I'm Bruce Lindner from Colchester. I ask this committee not to pursue further consideration of the proposed requirements of S-22. A burgeoning liberal progressive ideology is attempting to reduce our constitutional second rights to the level of a privilege versus a right. This should set off alarm bells in everyone's mind. Every time there is a single incident involving a firearm, it seems to incentivize legislators to punish all gun owners by enacting that one more gun law. Firearm ownership is treated as a pariah and not with the respect afforded by our Second Amendment. Anti-gun groups in Vermont say the Second Amendment needs to be repealed or brought into the 21st century as no longer relevant. A single incident in 2018 is the impetus for the bill's sponsors to implement a waiting period. Single incident does not achieve the formidable benchmark for controlling all other citizens for one person's misdeeds or indiscretions. There were 41,550 completed firearm transfers in 2018. 99.9976 percent of those transactions would not have benefited from the proposed waiting period. CDC, Johns Hopkins, Duke, and others have stated there is no conclusive evidence that a waiting period reduces crimes or suicide. Legislators need to step up and deal with the undisputed systemic causes of suicide, illicit drugs, opioids, and so on. Guns don't precipitate people to commit suicide. The storage provision of this bill is in direct conflict with the Supreme Court ruling in Heller that struck down its unconstitutional requirement that all firearms, including rifle shotguns, be kept unloaded and disassembled and bound by a trigger lock. The court ruled that to lock up firearms inherently inhibits the immediate access for self-defense, and the storage requirement is nonenforceable.
Thank you.
I sent a copy to you.
Ticket number 049, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Jim O'Malley, and I'm from Ludlow, Vermont. I had the privilege last year of attending several sessions at the legislature and seeing how the sausage is actually made. It was interesting and enlightening. I appreciate your time. To the parents of Mr. Black, you have my sincerest sympathies. Suicide is a horrible thing. I was a former mental health worker. I worked in an adolescent center. And a man that I worked with, the young man, killed himself after treatment. No one saw it coming. I will say to you that I researched this issue, and I found that this legislative body actually was involved in some pro-suicide legislation not long ago. I think it was 2017 in Vermont. And if you look up the state figures, I would encourage all of you to do that, look up the state figures, on how many people availed themselves of that. So now we have a young man who has tragically taken his own life. But we're going to restrict the rights of how many thousands of Vermonters because of this tragedy, when on the other side of the coin, we've decided that people who've decided to end their lives can do so if they consult a doctor. I have a problem with that as a gun owner. I would also ask you to consider the women of Vermont and the vulnerable people of Vermont. state figures, on how many people availed themselves of that. So now we have a young man who has tragically taken his own life, but we're gonna restrict the rights of how many thousands of Vermonters because of this tragedy? When on the other side of the coin, we've decided that people who've decided to end their lives can do so if they consult a doctor. I have a problem with that as a gun owner. I would also ask you to consider the women of Vermont and the vulnerable people of Vermont, because there are such people, who are in situations where a firearm can mean the difference for them between life and death. And a forty-eight-hour waiting period, while it seems like a good idea right now, may not be a great idea for that woman who is facing a potentially abusive spouse, who may want to hurt them. And in many of the areas of Vermont, mine included, we're pretty far away from somebody getting there in time to intervene. And interestingly enough, a firearm is a force multiplier, it just is. And that woman can defend herself with that, better than she can without it. I'd rather she didn't have to wait. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Zero nine five, you're on deck.
Hi.
How are you? I don't have anything written. I spoke, my name is Rob Mazza, from Colchester. I spoke with a friend of mine today who, two weeks ago, lost his daughter to a heroin overdose. Do you guys know how many people have died in the last year in Vermont from drug overdoses? He made me aware of it today.
Robbie, you gotta pull close to that mic.
Hundred and eight, hundred and eight in the state of Vermont. You guys have any laws on the books, ready to go, that'll punish a drug dealer and lock them up permanently, or do you let, I mean, we know that they're pretty much let out, they're let out on bail, they're not kept incarcerated? So I wonder, what is it you're looking for? I guess, I guess I really just don't know what you're looking for. Wouldn't we, wouldn't we spend more time protecting the larger amount of deaths, which death is bad, I get it? But, Mr. Ruth, like, you're introducing the bill to make sure my firearms are safe in my home, in the sanctity of my home. How are you gonna enforce that? That's my home. I'm a responsible gun owner, I have safes, but, as one gentleman mentioned, if someone's kicking down my door, or coming to rob me, what am I gonna do? Make him wait until I can get my firearm? There's only my wife and I that live there. I, you're crossing this threshold into the sanctity of my home. Now, maybe protecting people when I drive my car going over the speed limit, I'm sharing that road. I don't share that home with anybody but myself and my wife. So, I guess I didn't write anything, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, thank you.
Ticket one zero five, you're on deck.
My name is Ed Wilson, I'm from Morrisville. I'd like to offer my condolences to Andrew Black's family, and also suggest that they honor and memorialize Andrew in a way that doesn't infringe on others' rights. I believe that a group or organization that works directly with young people in crisis would be much more effective. Pro-gun people are often perplexed when facts and reason are ignored by legislators. We must understand that there are people who believe that no one should have guns, and they will do everything possible to make it more difficult for you to buy, own, or use a gun. Last year during the House discussions of the anti-gun bills, we were treated to the spectacle of a legislator who raised, stood to speak, raised his finger, and said, "One life! One life! If I can save just one life..." He would not feel badly about infringing upon our constitutional rights. He didn't care about the Constitution, he just wanted to feel good and show us what a good person he was. Waiting periods, magazine bans, universal background checks are all feel-good measures that do nothing to protect our safety. I oppose the anti-gun waiting periods, and I support the pro-gun bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ticket number one zero five, this is your last chance to come on down and be on deck. Ticket one zero five. Ticket zero five seven, you're on deck.
My name is Captain Tom Mallenchuk, I'm a retired master mariner in the U.S. Merchant Marine. I've been about everywhere, different war zones, was in a revolution, I've seen it all, and I've seen what happens when the government has all the firearms. But I wanna talk to S-22 and the safe storage. I agree with the last speaker wholeheartedly, but S-22 with its safe storage is just wrong. I'm gonna tell you a short story, and I hope I can do it in the time. About a week ago, I live in Randolph Center, my wife and I were asleep at two o'clock in the morning. My dog started barking, someone was pounding on our door. Came out of a dead sleep, had my firearm on my nightstand, grabbed it, went downstairs, cracked the door open, rough-lurking person was there, talking away, obviously drunk, don't know what else, he was on something else. He wanted me to come out and help him with a vehicle he had off the road. So, much to my wife's chagrin, I said I would, but I had my firearm. And when I stepped out, that was the first thing he saw. He says, "I see you've got your firearm with you, that's smart." I said, "Yep, Smith and Wesson are my best friends." So, I walked up the road, sure enough, he was off the road, I pulled him out. The next day, I found out he was a convicted felon, he was a druggie, he's been in jail many a time, he's a local thief, and thank God I had my pistol handy in my room, and not where it was locked up, and I might have dropped the key, or couldn't find it in the middle of the night. Thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you very much.
Ticket number zero eight nine, if you'd come on up, and ticket number one one six, if you'd also come up.
If people could get a little closer to the mic, it would be great.
We would also recommend when you do come up, that you get as close to the mic as you can, because I think that decreases the amount of feedback that you're getting.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to support S-22, I'm Christopher Ashlet from Norwich. We have heard much tonight regarding gun owners' rights and the Second Amendment. It's important to recall that the ultimate purpose of a gun is to project a bullet into a target, a game animal, or a person. The results: satisfaction with a bullseye, venison for the table, protection in a threatening situation, or tragedy when someone takes his or her own life, has an accident, or shoots another. In 2008, the Supreme Court ruled in the Heller case that people have a right to own a gun for self-defense, but it also ruled that this right is not unlimited, and government, the government can place reasonable restrictions on that right. Public safety requires, my safety requires, reasonable gun safety laws, and S-22 provides these laws. We have all heard from the public health officials that waiting periods for gun purchases reduce the number of people who take their own lives, and for that, for most, the motivation for suicide doesn't reoccur. We are also aware that secure storage of a firearm prevents tragedy, particularly regarding Vermont's teen suicide rate, which is the highest in New England. I would like to add a bit of information for you to consider. As an elementary school teacher and principal with thirty-five years' experience in Vermont, on numerous occasions, students would report to me at show and tell, or during the discussion of personal safety, that they knew where their parents hid their gun. The fact is, these young children were very aware and very savvy of how to access their weapons. When I reported to parents, they would always be shocked that the children knew where the gun was. These self-safe storage rules are an important step to keep all of us safe, particularly our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still missing?
Still missing eight nine.
Ticket zero eight nine, you are on deck, along with ticket zero zero six. So we should have in the front row, ticket zero eight nine, and ticket number zero zero six.
I'll take this spot.
Okay, go ahead.
I ask that, my name is Tabitha Armstrong, and I'm from Glover, Vermont. I ask that no action be taken on S-22 this session, because one hearing with a few hours of public testimony by a handful of voters is not nearly enough to weigh the interests and wants of this state as a whole, especially when discussing constitutional rights as well as an integral part of our Vermont heritage. I read the opening clause of Article 16 of Vermont's Constitution, as many members of our legislature seem to forget its words. The people have a right to bear arms for the defense of themselves and the state. The two conditions proposed in S-22 are a direct violation of this article. Your bill suggests that when I'm in my home, if a firearm is not on my person, it must be locked in safe storage or rendered incapable of being fired. How am I to defend myself should someone break in, if I must unlock a safe, get to unload my weapon, or remove a trigger guard in just a few seconds? As a woman and a mother, there are a few times when at home I can comfortably or safely wear my firearm in complete needed tasks. As for the forty-eight-hour waiting period, you've heard testimony saying it would reduce suicide rates, but a study done by the, by two PhDs and published by the U.S. National Library of Medicine shows different. First off, other states like Vermont, they don't have, most of their people don't already own firearms when they commit suicide. Second, this study looked at each of the gun laws, and it stated that a waiting period seemed to reduce suicides when combined with other gun laws. But when they calculated for the effects of poverty, population density, age, race, and ethnicity, the results were virtually unchanged, and those are in states where the population is already less likely to already own firearms. So let's look at Vermont's statistics. From 2011 to 2016, as published by EPR, I broke them down into suicides and homicides, and then further into age, gun type, male versus female. Consistently, over eighty percent of firearms are suicides by men, over seventy percent were over the age of thirty. So let's look at firearm suicides by people under thirty, and see how these suicides might be affected by the, these bills. So the average number of suicides by people twenty and under is only two and a half per year. I expanded the number of people who may be affected by a forty-eight-hour waiting period to include anyone between twenty-one and thirty. Can I, yeah, well, I have, I have a full, I have a, yep. Well, I'm gonna, I'm emailing them, I have all the charts.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Ticket zero zero six, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Ticket one two five and zero nine nine, if you'd come on up and join us. That's one two five and zero nine nine.
Hi there, thank you for taking my comments. I am Timothy Moynihan, I live just down the hill here in Randolph, Vermont. I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the storage requirement in Bill S-22. Freedom and unity, Vermont's state motto, it's a great motto. It reminds us that there's a balance between our obligation to the community and our personal freedoms. I think suicide is a very serious concern, and yet, I do not think that Bill S-22 strikes a reasonable balance between personal freedom and community good. This law seems to imply that if I'm in my own home, and I leave my firearm on the desk while I go to another room, I may be committing a crime punishable by imprisonment. What if I do not have a safe at home, yet I locked my home when I left home? Would my home be considered a secure container, or would I be eligible for imprisonment? My point is that this bill, if made law, would fail at least two tests. It is not clear enough, and it is an unreasonable burden on the private citizen. In other words, it is not a reasonable balance of freedom and unity. Based on this and other reasons, I ask you to oppose Bill S-22, I also ask you to support Bill S-1, S-2, and S-13. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What ticket number were you?
One two five?
Thank you.
Is that right?
Yeah, good.
Okay. I'm Elsa Vergey from Springfield.
Before you get underway, hang on just a second.
Okay.
And then say your name again, because when you get the mic...
Ticket zero eight seven, you're on deck.
Get close. Okay, okay. Hi, I'm Elsa Vergey from Springfield. During Mr. and Mrs. Black's testimony at the State House on February 28th, they spoke about their son Andrew being in a black hole, and if he hadn't had access to a gun for only forty-eight more hours, he would have had a chance to come out of his depression and not take his own life. There's absolutely no way of knowing this. It may have taken him two days, two months, or he may have never emerged from his black hole. People who are bent on committing suicide plan and take steps to accomplish their goals. He could have easily waited the forty-eight hours and then killed himself. What is not vague is when a person has been seriously threatened by a spouse, ex-spouse, coworker, rabid animal, this is a very tangible, dangerous situation. When you need to defend your life and well-being, you need to do so now, and in the best way possible, not in forty-eight hours. I believe the right to self-protection of your life and your family's life trumps a vague notion that someone may or may not commit suicide if he or she has more time to think about it. In New Hampshire, the Senate is considering SB 282-FN, which would allow schools to teach suicide prevention, and educate teachers to identify warning signs of a suicidal student. Senator Ruth Ward states, quote, "Educating teachers to identify these warning signs is a critical first step to prevent suicides among our student population, who may not have the support networks to cope with the pressures many teenagers face. This is a wonderful idea that would have long-term beneficial effects without restricting anyone's constitutional rights. This is a program that everyone could get behind and support. We in Vermont should follow New Hampshire's lead. Please do not further, go any further with S-22 or S-72. Both these bills succeed only in creating victims and put unnecessary burdens on honest, law-abiding citizens." And I actually brought the...
Thank you, thank you.
...the article.
Thank you.
Through what ticket number you are?
Ninety-nine.
Thank you.
Hi.
Ticket one zero one, you're on deck.
If you get close to the mic.
Pardon?
Get close to the mic.
Okay, my name's Greg Paulman, I'm from Moncton. As a lifelong Vermonter and sportsman, I'm also a hunter education instructor, a gunsmith, and a community support worker for people who have developmental disabilities and mental health issues. So I kinda bridge both sides of the spectrum. I can tell you right now with a hundred percent certainty that we do not now, nor did we a year ago, have a gun problem in this state. What we have is a people problem. We have a problem that the legislature does not address things in a way that will actually help people, and too many people are putting forward emotional, feel-good legislation. And we have to stop that, or we're not going to ever accomplish anything. The state of Vermont has not been in compliance with properly reporting mental, mental illness, people who have been adjudicated as mentally defective to the FBI NIC system, I think since the day it went online. And I realize at this point it's gonna cost a lot of money to do that, but your universal background check you passed last year means nothing until you get that done. What we have here are people who have mental illness issues, who need help, and they need help through the schools, they need help through the community. A waiting period on a firearm, I mean, if you look at the last ten years, how many times someone has bought a firearm and committed suicide the same day? I think we know it's probably, there's probably only one out there. But, what we need to do is, we need to realize that we need to help the people. Because if it's not a firearm, I can go buy a bottle of Tylenol for five dollars and swallow the whole bottle, and I'm gonna be just as dead as if I used a firearm. Thank you.
Thank you.
One zero one, reporting.
Over here, sir.
You're gonna go over there.
Okay.
Ticket one zero eight, you're on deck.
I'm Devon Craig, Plainfield, Vermont, I'm representing the Berry Fishing Hand Club's 700-plus members. We are not in favor of S-22. Waiting periods will cause major problems. For thirty-seven years, our club has sponsored an annual gun show. It is by fire and major fundraiser. We have donated a lot of money and time and programs which are beneficial to the community. A waiting period would be the end of the gun show, as it depends mostly on spontaneous buys. It would severely curtail the income of the eighty-plus vendors who count us every year. Their employees would also lose much-needed income, and it would drastically affect the revenue to local businesses such as restaurants, hotels, motels, and advertising services. It would stop... It would stop the collection of substantial fees and taxes for the city of Barry and the state of Vermont. This would happen in several communities in Vermont. God knows Vermont needs all the business it can get. The waiting period would not have a major preventative effect on suicides. Firearms account for 50% of all suicides, most of which are planned. A waiting period would only delay the inevitable. I witnessed most of Mr. and Mrs. Black's testimony. The planned suicide of their son is tragic, I know. My father and my only brother committed suicide by firearms. I firmly believe their suicides were inevitable. Suicide is not normal. It is abnormal. It's a mental health issue of which we all struggle to deal with. Healthcare experts agree that suicide, preventing suicide is very hard to do. We also have heard the mantra, "But if it saves one life," consider this highly possible scenario. A woman has a relief of abuse order served on her often violent husband. She wants protection but can't buy a gun for 48 or more hours. In the meantime, the husband kills her. A life was lost. It works both ways. The second part of S-22 would require all firearms to be locked up in households. Not only is this highly unaffordable, it severely hampers our rights.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Ticket 108, are you here?
I'm a little confused about S dot 22.
Can I just stop you for a second? Ticket 106, you are on deck along with ticket 044. If you could identify yourself for the record.
Roger Carroll, I live in Brattleboro. I'm a little confused about this. Your concern about suicide is a little strange because, on the one hand, I live in a state that allows physician-assisted suicide. You allow physician-assisted suicide and you're so concerned about other, you know, suicide. So that's, that's a little odd right there. Second of all, the storage requirement has no provision. How are you going to enforce that? Especially when gun owners store their firearms and lock them away anyhow. And I travel out of state quite a bit. I don't want to come back and face my own firearm. So my firearms are disabled, they're locked away, and I don't, you know, I do, I do it anyhow, so why bother putting a law in when most people who have any common sense are not going to leave them unattended and able to be fired? Little strange, guys. I mean, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
You know what ticket number you are?
Yes, 44. Is that correct? Is it my turn?
Yes.
Ticket 106, are you here? Ticket 106.
I'll take it.
Like to have down ticket 115 and ticket 126. 115 and 126.
Get close. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Michael Morgan from the town of Milton and I'm here primarily to discuss my dissatisfaction with S-22. Vermont is one of the safest, top three safest states in the United States. We do not have a gun problem in this state. I'm tired of what I call knee-jerk politics that only impact law-abiding gun owners, like the ones that were instituted last year, the bills that we saw signed by the governor. My concerns are as follows, I guess I should say that, I guess they're semi-questions, I don't necessarily expect them to be answered, but just for food for thought. Again, some of this is redundant, but I'm going to still state it. Why do I need to be dictated on the storage of my firearms? My, my home is safe, it has an alarm system, and I, and I dictate how those guns are taken care of in my safe haven, my home. Why do we have to consider it a 48-hour waiting period to purchase a gun? These individuals have been fully vetted by the NICS check, the 4473 form, by the Federal Bureau of Investigation. If this isn't good enough, what is? Maybe we need to be talking to our national level of politicians if, if that's not good enough, but I believe it is, because that is the, the top law agency in this country. Should we be looking at a 48-hour waiting period to buy a car or to stop drunk driving? I don't think we would want to see that. Bottom line is, I will not be fooled by this slippery slope. We should not be, we should not be encroaching on our Vermont traditions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I wanted to just say Representative Cooper is here as well.
Oh, there he is, right there.
Ticket number 119, come on down, you're on deck.
Hang on just a second, let me see if we can do something.
I'm Wayne Townsend, a born Vermonter. A bill forcing people to lock their guns up in our homes would make us weak. And you're using child safety as your agenda to control our rights. Well, my children's safety is the reason I'm fighting to protect our gun rights. With the rise in crime and home invasions is the biggest reason we need our Article 16 right to bear arms to defend ourselves and the ones we love. If when someone breaks into our homes, what would we do under this new Ponzi scheme of a law? Tell said intruder to wait right there? I have to go unlock my gun safe to be able to get my gun to defend myself and my children before you kill us all? As a parent, it is my responsibility to teach my children the safe do's and don'ts of safe firearm handling. I have three adult children that hunt and have arms, not one time have any of them ever mishandled a firearm. I have one child left in my home that is six years old and have started teaching her already safe handling with an unload empty BB gun. I love each and every one of my children, so I ask, please don't take our way of life and/or rights to defend ourselves. Please vote no to these unconstitutional gun bills. Wayne Townsend, Bethel, Vermont.
Thank you.
Ticket 119, are you here? Last call. Seeing no one. Ticket 097, come on down. Ticket 002, come on down.
I have nothing prepared, but ladies and gentlemen, just bear with me. My wife, my wife is a, my name is Jack Friedman. I live in Danville, Vermont. I lived for 35 years in Island Pond, Vermont. My wife is a GAL in the court system. Your 48-hour waiting period strikes me as, is damaging. It's unintentional consequences. She deals with a lot of battered women representing their children in court as an advocate for the children. A lot of it's drug-related, some of it's just plain old violence. And this 48-hour waiting period, you know that when a woman has been threatened several times, sometimes it's only once. If she feels threatened, she should have the right to go to a gun shop and passing all the requirements, purchase that firearm and bring it home in defense of herself and her children. I live in a rural area, lived in the Northeast Kingdom my whole time in Island Pond since 1980. And we raised five kids, 11 grandchildren. Firearms always in the house. My wife and I were competitive shooters in Western New York. And the safe storage business, I mean, if somebody comes to my door in the middle of the night, I've got my alarm system, I've got my Bullmastiff Booker, who'd probably lick them to death but makes a lot of racket. The other part of that system is a loaded firearm. You know, if you want to make this a law punishable by whatever, Senator Baruff, start with me, because I will not comply. I just will not comply. Thank you.
Thank you.
What ticket number were you?
002.
002, thank you.
Hi, I'm Justin Lindholm from Mendon, Vermont.
Justin, hang on a second. Ticket 097, last call. Ticket 058, come on down, you're on deck. And ticket number 088, you're on deck. Thanks.
Okay, again, I'm Justin Lindholm from Mendon, Vermont. I've actually watched a person commit suicide with a gun. Not a very pleasant experience. My father also died in a car. When I was young, I wanted all kinds of laws put on vehicles and people operating vehicles so that we would not lose people through death in vehicles. My stepfather said, "If we do the laws you want, Justin, we're not going to have any rights." I wanted people to be locked up if they didn't wear a seatbelt. I wanted people locked up if they went above the speed limit. You can't do that. And with guns, you can't just take away people's rights to save a life here and there. And the 48-hour waiting period is going to be such that it doesn't save that many to be worth it. We need the guns available to use. The, locking them up, that this suicide that I watched, 48 hours would have meant nothing. 200 hours would have meant nothing. Locking it up would have meant nothing. And so we might save a life here or there, but what have we gained in society? We're basically going to live very blah lives, always worried about when we're going to be punished for not behaving ourselves. And that's not a good thing. I also carry a card with a suicide hotline number for myself. I'm going to use charcoal briquettes if I ever need to commit suicide, and I hope you don't put a 48-hour waiting period on charcoal briquettes. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
058. You're 58?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Are you 88? Thank you. In that case, ticket 102, come on down.
Ready?
Good afternoon. I'm Brooke Beard. I live near Woodstock, Vermont. I grew up with guns all my life. I've been a gun owner and still am. When I was younger, the sole, when I was younger, the sole purpose of the NRA was gun safety and marksmanship. As a recreational hunter, I've always viewed guns simply as tools, rarely, if ever, as weapons. I'd like to present the following eight key facts about suicide, waiting periods, and safe storage.
Hold on. Sorry.
There we go.
Is that better?
We're getting feedback somewhere. We're trying.
I'll give you a few extra.
We'll give you a few.
These are facts about suicide, waiting periods, and safe storage. 420 Vermonters died from firearms between 2011 and 2016, and 89% of those, 374 individuals, were suicides. 85% of suicide attempts with guns are fatal. Many of the other most widely used suicide attempts are successful, less than 5% of the time. Vermont's suicide death rate is 35% higher than the national average, and guns are used in 59% of those cases. States with mandatory waiting periods had an average, had on average, 17% fewer murders and about 10% fewer suicides. When South Dakota repealed its 48-hour waiting period for handgun purchases in 2009, overall suicides the following year increased 7.6%. Miners living in homes with unsecured guns are at an especially high risk of suicide and accidental firearm injury. Between 2004 and 2014, over 6,000 miners intentionally shot themselves. Between, excuse me, the vast majority of those miners who used guns, used guns owned by someone in their home. All of these.
He's getting a few more minutes because we cut him off with fixing the mic.
All of these statistics, all of these statistics are well-sourced and attached to a copy of Bob Williamson's testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What ticket number are you?
088.
Ticket number 102. Ticket number 102. Ticket 098, come on down, you're on deck.
My name is Dwayne Merrill. I'm from Milton, Vermont. I'm a professional auctioneer and appraiser for the last 52 years in Vermont. We do an annual sporting auction in Williston, as many other auctioneers do, across the state, which involves firearms. We are licensed, we do the background check. I have about 210,000 people now each month that follow my auctions online, ad-live, as well as phone bidding. This bill will be a detriment to our business. Many of our people come from out of state or from rural areas in Vermont. To require them another drive time to the auction, another period of time to come will definitely hamper our business and will be a drawback to it. More importantly, I live in a rural town in Milton, Vermont. I was brought up around guns. My father made Kentucky rifles as a hobby. He was a national muzzle loading champion. I've lived with guns all my life, feel very secure around them. I'm more scared of somebody with a chainsaw, car, or drugs. And I've had friends who committed suicide, usually related to medication. The most important thing I want to say is that we in a rural area are in danger. There isn't anybody on this committee that can protect me in my house. My police will tell me if there's one or two police on duty and they are involved in another incident, they're not going to make it to my house. I'm 10 miles from the police station. It's going to be a half hour, an hour before I see anybody. I should have the right to pick up that arm if I need it. I'm very careful about firearms, I know the danger in them, but I think you need to realize in Vermont, we've done a tremendous, a great job in doing safety with firearms. Very, very few accidents.
Thank you very much.
Tell me what ticket number you are. Ticket 110, you're on deck.
Good afternoon. My name's Michael Bard from Waterbury Center, Vermont. Calling on for S-1, 2, and 3 and against S-22. I think the big concern for most sportsmen is a lot of the unintended consequences. We see this all the time. I think most sportsmen are very law-abiding citizens. You know, we try to do what's right. You know, we secure our guns and, you know, we believe in gun safety. That's just all part of being a sportsman. But I think you're going to see so many unintended consequences. You saw some of the auctioneers talking about it's going to jeopardize gun sales at auctions. You're going to see, what happens if I have a once-in-a-lifetime trip to out west and my gun breaks? Can't buy, you're leaving tomorrow. You ain't going to be able to buy a gun and you're going to lose that trip of a lifetime. I don't think people have thought about things, things like that. I think we as sportsmen look at gun control as not being something that's really important. It's more of a mental health issue. And I think all sportsmen are for mental health because we see the mass shootings and such. Those are created by people, not, not law-abiding citizens. They're created by people who have mental illness. And if we don't, you know, we really need to control the access of guns, you know, we want to make them accessible to people who are law-abiding. And if we don't, sportsmen are just, you know, this is a tradition in Vermont and we need to keep that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, what ticket number were you?
098. Zero nine eight.
Thank you. Ticket one one zero, last call. Ticket one one zero. Seeing no one, the next ticket would be zero nine two. Zero nine two. And zero, I'm sorry, one zero nine. Come on down as well. Ticket one zero nine.
Okay, ready?
Hi. My name is Evelyn Haberman from Richmond, Vermont. And thank you for hosting this. I think that Vermont has very responsible gun owners. And I think that parents do a very good job in in teaching respect for the responsibility of gun owning, owning a gun in Vermont. I do not want to take rights away from responsible gun owners. And I appreciate very much the focus that people have voiced here focusing on supporting suicide prevention and the health, mental health aspects of that. But I am in support of the forty-eight hour waiting period and the safe gun storage because both have shown to have a positive impact on reducing suicide and domestic violence incidences. Yes, people who are bent on committing suicide and have been planning it for a very long time will wait the two days and they will still do it using a gun if that is what they have a mindset to do. But it will reduce the spontaneous acts that are done in the heat of the moment. And I personally know of a young man that could have, I believe, been saved if he had had some time to think about it and not be spontaneous. And so, if these laws can even save one person's life, I think it's a small inconvenience to a responsible gun owner without taking any rights away from the gun owner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What ticket number were you?
Zero nine two.
Thank you. Ticket zero zero four. You're on deck. Zero zero four.
My name is Jeremy Frost from Tunbridge, Vermont. I'd like to thank the committee for hearing my testimony. I'm here to speak in fierce opposition to a number of bills that are currently under review by the Vermont State Legislature. I'm completely opposed to House Bills one fifty-nine and three twenty-nine, as well as Senate Bills twenty-two and twenty-six. I'd like to do everything in my power to stop these bills from becoming law, and I ask you take no action. Components of these bills tote them as common sense and reasonable laws that make everyone safer. In fact, these laws do nothing but needlessly restrict the rights of law-abiding Vermonters and put many of us in danger. There is no common sense whatsoever in these bills, and they are in no way reasonable. I would like to ask every legislature, as well as those Vermont citizens who do support these bills, as whether they would still support each of the four bills I mentioned if the word firearm was replaced with automobile. Can you imagine if you imposed a two- or three-day waiting period every time someone bought a car in this state or required that I lock my keys up when I was in my house? I don't think you would very much care if someone used a three-D printer to make parts. And I find this is a gross overstep into people's lives, privacy, and property. For all these reasons, I ask you to not consider the four bills I mentioned. H one, S twenty-two, waiting to enact waiting periods on all firearm purchases in the state. I'm truly sorry that Andrew Black took these actions, and words cannot express the sympathy I found for Mr. and Mrs. Black. This community and I are all too familiar with the painful realities of suicide and the devastating effects it has on those left behind. I understand Mr. and Mrs. Black's needs and pursue some sort of action, but I feel their efforts are misguided and unnecessarily affect thousands of other people throughout the state. I respectfully submit my testimony to the committee, and thank you once again for your time.
Thank you.
What ticket number were you?
One zero nine.
Thank you. Ticket zero four five, you're on deck.
My name is Bob Richard. I'm from Berlin, Vermont. And I don't have a prepared statement. One thing I would like to say is, on the possibility that a forty-eight hour waiting period may prevent a suicide, I agree with that. But a logical person would also agree that in that same forty-eight hours, if a person is committed to take his own life, he or she will and choose another means. The other means, we don't know what that is. Mr. Burgoyne chose to take his own life and five Harvard Union students. So, we don't really know if this law, if passed, is going to save lives or cost more. But one thing we do know for sure is it will have a very big detrimental effect on our gun show in Berry, which seems insignificant, you know, when we're talking about death. But the reality, there are vendors that come from five different states or more to display the guns in the gun show. And they won't come up if you can't make the transaction that day. And nobody's going to buy if they have to wait to take the gun days later from out of state and go through other paperwork. And it's my understanding that S twenty-two was in the legislative hopper before Andrew Burgoyne, or Andrew Black committed suicide. If that's true, it seems a shame that he's being used as a pawn in this legislative chess game to pass anti-gun legislation. Thank you for your time.
What ticket number were you?
Zero zero four.
Thank you. Ticket one two zero, you're on deck.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Ron LaFreniere. I'm from the town of Bolden. My family's been in Vermont for many, I'm a many-generational period of time. I have relatives that came here in seventeen hundreds. Every single one of them has had a firearm in their home, hanging on the wall over many years. Some, and we were taught from a very young age how to use firearms, how to be safe with firearms. I have done the same thing with my son, my relatives, my nieces and nephews, and also any child that comes into my home. I don't, I think what we're doing and looking at S twenty-two and telling us how we are supposed to keep our firearms in our home is not your job. That's our job. I can look back many times, and you've, people have told us that you don't look at, don't tell us what to do in our homes. Well, now you're telling us what to do in our homes, and I don't think it's right. I think what you need to do is focus on the bigger issue of the drugs in the state and what they've done to the people that are here and the people that are coming here, and why, and take and make sure that that stuff is cured. I'm very, very sorry for some of the things that have happened in the state and some to some of the young people in the state. But I do not think that by proposing how I have to keep a firearm in my house is going to stop anyone from doing some things that they shouldn't be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ticket one ticket one two zero, are you here?
Good evening.
Ticket one, I'm sorry, ticket one two zero, you'll be joined by ticket zero four eight. Zero four eight.
Good evening. My name is Mary Cox. I'm on the board of NAMI Vermont, but I'm here speaking this evening as a mother, a sister, and also a veteran. I'm the mother of a son who has a mental illness. I'm the sister of a brother who had a mental illness and who ultimately committed suicide. And I'm a twenty-seven-year veteran of the United States Coast Guard and Coast Guard Reserve. And I'm very concerned about the high suicide rate amongst veterans here in the state of Vermont. In fact, Vermont ranks as one of the highest in terms of suicides of veterans per capita in the entire United States. There's a lot of things that we can do towards alleviating the suicide rates amongst veterans, such things as talking to veterans and providing them with gun locks, particularly gun locks with the veteran crisis number attached to the gun lock. They found that this helps. There's other things that can be done. But I wanted to say that I'm in favor of the waiting period. I think that having a reasonable waiting period makes sense because we now have many more tools, many more paths to take to help people when they feel in despair, as so many veterans do. They get to a point where they feel that they're misunderstood. They're not sure how to deal with their experience from being in a war zone. And they really just need support that is available to them if they're able to reach out or be reached. And so, I recommend the waiting, the reasonable waiting period. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ticket one one four.
I'm David Hamilton, Episcopal priest, also trained as a psychotherapist and practiced as a psychotherapist for fifteen years, as well as doing parish ministry. I am here in support of S twenty-two with regard to the waiting period. Having dealt with a number of people in therapy over the years, what I have discovered is that the drive toward finding relief from depressive symptoms is powerful. But it is also something that can be averted with enough support, with enough caring of the community. And when someone does, in fact, commit suicide, there is not one death. There are many repercussions. And in the way, in a way, the spirits of many people who knew that person have suffered a death as well. I think that it is important to consider that we have an epidemic in terms of our mental health situation. And if we are able in any way to step into the situation and to help prevent the rise of this epidemic in terms of another suicide, even of one person, I think that that is a very worthwhile thing to do. I support those who have guns. I have no problem with guns. I am someone who has, in fact, shot firearms. I'm a very good shot. But I don't consider that the restriction that would be placed upon them by having a twenty-four hour, or forty-eight, or seventy-two hour waiting period is any infringement of their right.
Ticket zero six zero. Come on down. You're on deck. Zero six zero.
I'm Joe Bosie. I'm from Randolph Center. Live right down the hill here. I'm a former combat marine. Seen a lot of death, seen a lot of destruction. As we see here in Randolph Center where I live, we don't have many police. Matter of fact, police didn't show up to you folks, did? Be right honest with you. That said, I'm obviously wearing the orange hat, the orange tag, and I'm against our new gun laws. You know, me and my wife, we take quite good care of ourselves, and we feel that we're well protected on our own. And though I have my guns safe, I don't feel the need to really lock up a handgun if I need to protect me or my family. I noticed on the last go-around of gun bills that went last year, which protected exactly nobody, I noticed that with those gun bills, every person who voted for it weren't from Randolph Center. Was born down the hill at Gafford Hospital in nineteen fifty-nine. That's said, the folks that voted for the last year's bills were all from out of state, weren't from here, had brought their laws to here. And so, well, Mr. Beruth, I welcome you to take your donations from Gunsense Vermont and the Bloomberg machine. Same with Mr. McDonald over here taking that money. I'd like to offer to give you some money, too. My offer is that I'll pay for your moving van to go away. That said, I hope, in fact, that we come to better senses and look at what really happens in suicide because I've seen it. My best man at my wedding committed suicide. They took his guns away. And then he said there were other methods when he hung himself two months later. So, the forty-eight hours isn't going to mean anything. Didn't mean anything to him two months later. Again, Mr. Beruth, my offer stands.
Ticket number zero zero five. You're on deck. Zero zero five.
Ludi Kova from Randolph, Vermont. And thank you for letting me speak today. I've been a pediatrician in Randolph for the last forty-two and a half years. I have also worked statewide and nationally to improve gun safety laws. I've had the sad experience of having multiple patients die by suicide during my forty-two-plus years as a pediatrician, most by guns, but some by other means. I strongly support S twenty-two legislation to have a mandatory minimum forty-hour, forty-eight-hour waiting period to buy a gun. Vermont has fewer suicide attempts than most states. That's the good news. But sadly, Vermont consistently ranks near the top for deaths from suicide. This correlates directly to the fact that Vermont has too easy access to guns. Research strongly supports that most suicides are impulsive acts during an often brief period of despair, often less than twenty-four hours prior to the attempted suicide. Vermont has one point five times the national suicide by firearm rate. Sadly, ninety percent of all gun deaths in Vermont are suicides. Suicide rates are climbing across the state, both in young population and in the elderly population. Guns are uniquely lethal. Eighty-five percent of those that attempt suicide with a gun die, while often the remainder who don't die have severe trauma. Ninety percent of people who attempt suicide by other means live and do not attempt a second time, especially with appropriate help. By having the waiting period of forty-eight hours or more, we save lives. There is no evidence that a waiting period inhibits access to guns. And if the argument is, "I need it right now," the likelihood of harm to self-or others is increased. In other words, if someone comes in and demands they need a gun right now, they're more likely to harm themselves or others. Lastly, children must be safe when guns are in the house. I have had experience with three- and five-year-olds playing with a load of pistols taken from under their parents' pillow. I strongly support S twenty-two.
Ticket zero zero five, last call. Seeing no answer, ticket one two eight, you are on deck, as is ticket one two three.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Johnson. I live in Lincoln. I'm a ninth-generation Vermonter. My family has been here since seventeen seventy-four. I oppose S twenty-two and S seventy-two. I'm sorry that Andrew Black's parents had to lose their son that way, but Andrew Black was a legal adult who made a choice. It was his choice to make. This legislature is actively, aggressively pursuing, codifying into the statute the legalization of an adult to kill a baby in utero at any time for any reason. And you want me to believe that you're interested in preserving life? This is an adult. He made a choice. As far as a waiting period goes, a right that is mine under Second Amendment and Article sixteen, if you deny my right, if you delay my right, you're denying my right. As to safe storage, there is no I'm going to need to find myself here, excuse me. The concept of keeping and bearing arms go together. I cannot readily bear my arm in self-defense if I cannot access it. I and I alone am capable to make the determination of which of my guns should be locked up and which of them should be available for defending myself and my home when necessary. S seventy-two is an expansion of an already illegal and unconstitutional law that violates the Second Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment, the Sixth Amendment, and the Fourteenth Amendment. I oppose that. I oppose that. You guys are slowly whittling away our rights. You're attempting to do it piece by piece until you can ultimately take them. I will not let that happen. I will not comply. This will not become Vermontuisuela.
Ticket 123, are you here? Ticket 054. Ticket 054 and ticket 121, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Daniel J. Monger, and I live with my wife Kathleen in New Haven, Vermont, and I've come to speak to you today on Senate Bill S-22. One of the things most notable about Vermonters is their self-reliance, which is proven with Hurricane Irene. Neighbors were helping neighbors rather than sitting back and waiting for the government when it chose to, to step in and help hurricane victims with what to do. No one said Vermonters acted, and that's what we call self-reliance. Some people do not act when required for many reasons. Some people do not act out of their laziness, and hence they lack necessary preparedness. Some people do not act out of analysis paralysis. Others do not act out of fear. Many have grown up believing in the mantra, "The government is here to help." Unfortunately, when it comes to protecting yourself and family, when seconds matter, the police are minutes away. My wife and I love and respect the police as much as anyone, but let me say it again, when seconds matter, the police are minutes away. I wish to address that section of S-22 that relates to the storage of a firearm, which is outside one's immediate possession or control, to be contained within a safe storage depository. If you keep a firearm loaded for the purpose of protecting your family and is kept 24 hours each day in your nightstand, if S-22 were to be signed into law, the government will now be able to imprison you for one year, plus fine you $500 to add insult to injury. The National Rifle Association, which is the oldest civil rights organization in the country, was founded in 1971 with the explicit purpose to teach people how to safely and accurately use firearms as a tool. So again, there are those in this room who wish to level the playing field and who wish to place everyone in Vermont self-reliant and irresponsible all together in one vulnerable disadvantaged plight.
Ticket 091, you're on deck.
Hello, my name is Nancy Stoddard, and I live in Brookfield, Vermont. First of all, I want to say I was very surprised that at a public meeting, we did not say the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States. We are all Americans here, and we all have the right to bear arms as in the Constitution. And it's the locking up our guns that they are not readily available in a crisis. I feel that's wrong. If someone breaks into my house, I want to be able to defend myself and my family. And I have trained my children through the years not to touch guns, and I think it's up to every parent to train their child. I believe that if we have to lock up our guns, and you make that a law, I am one person that would rather be tried by 12 than carried by six, because I cannot defend myself. I think your laws are wrong. We are all American citizens, and we all deserve the right of the Constitution. Thank you.
Ticket 091, last call. In that case, ticket 061 and ticket 003, you are on deck.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my testimony. My name is Paul Manganello. I'm a physician, and I am the medical director of the Good Neighbor Health Clinic in White River Junction. I'm a member of the Vermont Medical Society, and I and the medical society are in favor or in supportive of S-22 and S-72. Suicide is the leading cause of death by gun in Vermont, and there are many risk factors that might lead an individual to attempt to take his or her life. But death as an endpoint is only part of the story. In 2014, there were 114,000 deaths by suicide in Vermont. Half of them were by gun. But there are approximately 1,500 injuries as a result of attempted suicide. Roughly 300 are hospitalized, and roughly 1,200 are emergency room admissions. And these injuries included poisoning, cutting, and suffocation. Only 1% were firearm-related, and that's because of the inherent lethality of using a firearm. We know that there are common sense, there are best evidence laws which support waiting periods and also safe storage. There are states that have strong cap laws which have defined as more or less imposing criminal liability on the owner who has, where a child has access to that gun as either injured or killed. Has been shown that it decreases self-inflicted pediatric firearms by 54%, and also decreases the unintentional firearm injuries by 44%. Studies have also shown that waiting periods are able to reduce gun deaths by about 10%, which in states where that results in roughly a 22% to 33% fewer deaths by suicide for average states. There's no single piece of legislature which will address all of the factors surrounding suicide. If we hope to have any, again, support, S-72 and 22, thank you.
Ticket 053, you're on deck.
Bob Reedy from Warren. Vermont Governor John Bouxen's inaugural address stated that our God-given rights as enshrined in the United States and Vermont Constitution are not open for negotiation. They cannot be legislated away, they cannot be regulated away. Any attempt by any person, organization, or government to do so will be met with the strongest resistance. As 1927, just appropriate then as it is now, if not even more appropriate. It's our rights. They don't end where your fears and concerns begin. They're our rights, our God-given rights. They're enshrined in a state and federal constitution. Contrary to what you may have, and I mean, ought to have been told, they're not living iterative documents. They're legal documents. They're fixed in their meaning. They say what they mean, they mean what they say. They're not subject to change due to the shifting sands of public opinion. They are not subject to change due to judicial overreach by some administrative court judge, and they're certainly not subject to change due to legislative edict. We are Vermonters. You see that sea of orange behind you? They believe in the Constitution. They will defend the Constitution, and they will support the Constitution. We are Vermont's sons and daughters. We are mothers, fathers, husbands, wives, sisters, brothers, aunts and uncles, nieces, nephews, cousins, grandparents, grandchildren, and neighbors. We carry open, we carry concealed. We shoot, we hunt, we fish, we trap, and we've had enough of you, starting last year and goes on this year. Does nothing. The laws passed last year did nothing for safety. These laws, 22, 26, 72, they will do nothing for safety. Nothing. Obey your oath, honor the Constitution.
Ticket 107, you're on deck. 107.
Hi. I'm Amber. I'm from Lowell. You guys have all been... Okay. You've all been told the statistics, you've been told the statutes. I'm going to give you my opinion. This is bullshit. As you look out at the sea of orange, there's a lot of us here. We're tired of the government overtaking. It's enough. When is enough? Enough. No more. What are we going to do next? Make a two-day waiting period on Drano? Plastic bags? Enough is enough. Storage laws? How are you going to enforce that unless you've got cops at my door? Ain't nobody coming in to check it. I can guarantee you that. I thank you for your time. No more.
Ticket 052, you're on deck. 052.
Sean Handy, Wolston, Vermont. I'm a national match competitor. I travel all over the country shooting. I'm the 2,395th distinguished rifleman that ever became that as a civilian. I don't want to see Senator Sears' face again like I saw it last year, when his simple bill got Christmas tree into that abhorrent mess that you wanted to take your name off before it finally got signed. I want you guys to sleep at night. I bet you lost a lot of sleep on that one. And these bills taking a step further from what happened last year, now you're really messing with people's safety. Your 48-hour law, like many people have stated, just one life, one life passes away because of that safe storage, that 48-hour waiting period, it's on your guys' hands, and blood's on your hands. We are tired. You poked the bear long enough. We don't want any more. In fact, I'd like to see nothing but a repeal of what happened last year. We were the safest state. We had no problems. Jack Sawyer, what happened to him? Where is he now? Same as he was before. Probation, slap on the wrist? Don't. Don't mess with us anymore. We don't need it, we don't want it.
Ticket 117, come on down.
Forrest Griffin, Bethel. A waiting period will not stop the suicide. A gun is only a means. We had three doctors speak here tonight. The question is, how many of them had notified the ATF that they had a patient with a problem? That would stop them from buying a gun. That would stop that suicide that day. And the safe storage? Today's a perfect example of that. We have Orange County Police Department here. Let's just say there's a woman over in Corinth, Goose Green. They got a 15-year-old daughter. There's somebody pounding on their door trying to get in. With the road conditions the way they're in, there's no interstate, how long is it going to take that police department or a trooper to get there? You know, a safe storage is not a good reason. You know, if the woman knows the combination to their gun safe, she's excited because somebody's trying to get in, she turns the dial the wrong direction, the person's going to get in the house. What's going to happen with her and her 15-year-old daughter? Let's have a little common sense with this.
Ticket 127. 127. No 127, we're going to go with ticket 122.
I'm Ed Cutler, president of Gun Owners of Vermont, and I'm here to thank the committee for these public hearings. We respectfully ask that no action on the current anti-gun bills be taken. There are many reasons for that. The main reason is a few hours of testimony here, few hours last week, and what's going to happen tomorrow is not enough time to decide these serious constitutional issues. We're asking Senator Beruth's bills to be put on the wall forever. We are also asking for further hearings either during shutdown or next year, where we can supply expert testimony by nationally accredited people like Dr. John Locke. The bills for saving the mags or redoing them, we fully support them, except if Senator Beruth or the House adds amendments to them to make them worse like they did to S-55 last year. We have long memories. If they come back into this body or into this committee after they come out of the House worse than what we put in, we ask that you sit on those bills too. If not, please support those bills. Because of what happened in Minbury, the gentleman literally had his guns taken away, which was not even accordance with the law that was passed last year, we ask that no further action be taken with that. I know it's a sore subject, but when people lose their rights because their nephews decide to say something, that's wrong. It's a travesty of justice. Thank you.
Ticket 096. You're on deck, 096.
My name is Bruce Perofield. I'm from North Oakmont. I'm a firearms dealer and a national competitor. As a firearms dealer, when somebody comes to buy a firearm from me, they fill out the form, we go through the NIC check, and there is no way that I can know if that person has a mental reason for not being allowed to buy a firearm, because Vermont is lagging way behind the rest of the nation in providing that information to the NIC system. Before the NIC system, we did have background checks before the NIC system, and they weren't effective. That's why everybody went to the NIC system, but if the information is not in the NIC system, we can't make that determination. I would like to reiterate, as far as safe storage, a lot of people in Vermont live a long way from police protection. They live out in the boonies, they don't have a police department, they're dependent on state police or the sheriffs. They do a heck of a job, but like somebody here said, when the roads are bad and seconds count, unfortunately, they're minutes away. And that's just a fact of life in Vermont, and something to be considered. Thank you.
Ticket 122. 122, you're on deck.
Thank you. I appreciate this hearing. I'm Bob Williamson of South Woodstock, Vermont. I grew up with firearms. I had a bolt-action 22 rifle and loved target shooting. My dad had a semi-automatic 22 rifle and a .38 pistol. I knew where he kept it. And my brother was a collector. 52 years ago, my uncle took his life with a handgun. His death left a wound in our family. My cousin Nick first learned of his father's death when a news reporter called him to ask him for his statement. I can only imagine the shock my cousin felt taking that horrible call. I feel for any family that has to grapple with the loss of a loved one. It hits you like an earthquake and leaves aftershocks that last a lifetime. We have the opportunity to do something very specific to reduce suicides in Vermont by passing S-22. The family of Andrew Black have made a special request to institute a waiting period in the wake of their beloved son's tragic death. If we can spare families of the trauma and grief from losing a loved one, we should do so. The Blacks make a strong case for both safe storage and waiting periods. The firearms in the Black household were locked, so Andrew needed to buy the gun he then used to take his own life. While statistics tell, while statistics only tell part of the story, they are evidence-based and vital to the full picture. You've heard many statistics today. That said, we can lose sight of the human face behind those statistics. Each one is a real person whose tragic loss is borne by all those who knew and loved them, like the family of Cheryl Hannah, the Vermont Law School professor, like Ji Wu and Shuan Jue who lost their son Aaron. The list goes on. It's time we do something about this. I ask you to support S-22. It will make Vermonters safer, and it will relieve a lot of pain and suffering. Thank you.
Ticket 122, are you here? Ticket 094. And ticket 046, come on down.
I'm Bob Chriswald. I live in Milton.
I live in Milton, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have two concerns for our elected legislators, both state and federal, and they have to do one with being forthright in your intent on writing or proposing any gun legislation. That really means, what's your long-term goal? And secondly, I think you should be forthright in whom you actually represent. And I think those two concerns are rather obvious. And if you're not forthright, you shouldn't be in this office. And I have no problem at all with your forthrightness, or who you think you represent, or your long-term goals, but I don't think it should be disguised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ticket 104.
Thank you for hosting this meeting. Thank you for the audience, everyone for coming. My name is Archie Flower. I'm a resident of New Haven, but I was born in Middlebury. Montpelier has forgotten its proper role and its rightful relationship to the people. This is outlined in the Vermont Constitution in Article 6, Officers, Servants of the People, that all power being originally inherent in and consequently derived from the people. Therefore, all officers of government, whether legislative or executive, are their trustees and servants, and at all times, in a legal way, accountable to them. My point tonight is that if you're attacking one right, you really are attacking all of them. And it's highlighted when we look at Article 16, the right to bear arms, that the people have a right to bear arms for the defense of themselves and the state. That's clear. That's in our Constitution. But what do I mean by attacking other rights? We're also attacking freedom of speech in Article 13, that the people have a right to freedom of speech and of writing and publishing their sentiments. S-26 says, "A person shall not distribute or attempt to distribute via the Internet or any other means digital instructions for programming a three-dimensional printer." This is a direct violation of free speech, to try to get, also at Article 16. But my questions as an IT professional are these. Will Montpelier demand we build a great firewall around our state like they did in China? Will Montpelier make encryption illegal? Or will they demand key escrow so that they can read all of our email and Internet traffic? Will Montpelier outlaw virtual private networks? Will Montpelier make spyware mandatory on our PCs, game consoles, mobile devices, and everything else with a CPU?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ticket 093.
Hello. My name is John Becker from Randolph Center. I am here to say I do not support S-22, and I ask that you take no action on it. I am here to support S-1, S-2, and S-13. I'm a competitive shooter, and I compete in Vermont and New Hampshire. I have many friends in New Hampshire that also come into Vermont to compete in our competitions. I feel it's unfair that on June 30th, they're a law-abiding citizen and come into a competition on July 1st, they're criminals. I don't, I think that law should be removed in response to S-2. As a competitive shooter, we have a lot of custom guns. I have substantial investment in firearms and large-capacity magazines, and I feel that if I pass away, that I cannot will my assets to my family members. I feel that's, what am I supposed to do with them if I pass away? What's my family supposed to do with them? I feel there should be a mechanism that allows to be passed to family members. And in regards to S-13, I have two children that I take shooting with me. I would like to be able to teach them how to do the competitive shooting that I do, and be able to pass my guns and the high-capacity magazines to them so they can use them in the competitions. It's not fair that I can't, I can't do that, to be able to pass my assets to my own family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last number that I have for somebody that wanted to speak is 124. 124.
Good evening. My name is Noah Armstrong. I'm from Glover. I'm going to basically take over where my wife left off. Let's look at the firearm suicides of people under 30 and see how many of these suicides may be affecting, may be affected. The average number of suicides by people 20 and under was 2.5 per year. I expanded the number of people who may be affected by a 48-hour waiting period to include anyone between the age of 21 to 30, because as the record shows, most people over 30 years old in Vermont already own a gun. In that expanded area range, the average firearm suicide number is less than 10 a year. In this six-year period, there was only one child death by firearm accident. That's a total of 12 to 13 suicides a year that may be prevented by these two laws if those between 18 and 30 don't already own a firearm. In contrast, over the same period, there were an average of 828 violent crimes, 117 forcible rapes, 95 robberies per year, and 2,933 burglaries and home invasions per year. That is an average of 3,973 incidents, not including property damage, assault, or domestic violence stalking. So, does the possibility of 2.5 suicides outweigh my right and my wife's right to protect myself against the possibility of 3,000 to 4,000 criminal violations against a person or property? Because that is what the storage laws suggest. Does the possibility of stopping cult of 13 suicides a year, and that is a highly inflated number based on who may already be a gun owner, outweigh your ability to get a gun on short notice? Should we be treated, should we be threatened or stalked or have a dangerous animal on our property? Because that is what a 48-hour waiting period suggests. Do we exchange our constitutional rights spelled out in Article 16 to keep and bear arms for our own protection for such low stats? I don't think so. And as a legislative body...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Angela Sargent. I'm from right here in Randolph, Vermont. I'm requesting that you do not pass these bills. I'm a single mother of two young boys, and I live also with my 82-year-old grandmother. I am the line of defense in the home. I am also a woman who has been, unfortunately, a victim of domestic violence. And I really ask you that women who are in these situations don't have to wait 40 hours to get protection for themselves. This is so important, that they are able to protect themselves. The police, they're not that close by. They were very helpful to me, and I am very appreciative for what they did do. The state police were amazing, but it still takes them time to get to my house, and I want to be able to protect my family. Also, on another note, this winter, I was home, and I decided, for some reason, to sleep on the couch. I'm not sure why, I don't usually do that. 2:00 in the morning, there's a knock on my door, and there's a man, and he is aggravated, and he broke down four hours ago, and he was cold and wanted to come inside, and I, my first line of defense was my door, my second was my mildly obese dog, and then third was my gun. If he had broken through those other two barriers, that was my option, and that gun was readily available. It was ready to go. It was not locked away. And again, I have two sons. They know guns. They fired guns. They've learned about guns. They understand the repercussions of using them wrong. You know, we need to teach them, and it's just like anything else. I warn them against drugs and against sexual predators and against a lot of things. So, yes, they've been taught about the safety aspects of guns, and quite frankly, I don't want these rights taken away from all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. That concludes the public hearing. We appreciate all your thoughts from both sides, and I wanted to, special thanks to Senator Janet Miller and her crew, and Peter Delaney and Mike Wright for much-plenty counsel, as well as Kevin Moore for the technical assistance. Thanks to all of you. Have a good night.